It was just easy to book that place, so.
We have to have everyone here, right?
No, we gotta have four.
Four, even though we don't have seven anymore?
Yeah.
But you said there was, the votes have to be, what's the change?
With four, it has to be unanimous. Um, but we have to have four here. To get a point.
Okay.
Well, unanimous. For any motion to pass?
I think there's a three in one, with four.
Let me double check.
I need to pull it up.
I thought it was just a majority of the forum.
With four.
But with four, that would mean at least three.
Three.
Let me, let me double check.
Better check on that.
Is Commissioner Wampler, are you there?
I'm here.
Are you still in Florida?
At the moment, yes.
Oh, lucky.
Yes, we, well, yeah. Um, we successfully secured a place and got my parents moved. And we've got the home lifted and should be, should be closing up soon.
Well, that sounds nice.
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate everybody, uh, everybody's flexibility with me joining via online.
Well, we got the two Jeffs here, so we're, we've got a forum. We did, and it does say, "A majority vote of the commission members present at a meeting shall be required unless there is some more specific or a specific type of vote." So a three-person majority here out of four.
Thanks, Corlin.
I noticed that we don't have the, we have to do the approval of the, it's not on the agenda.
The rules order. Yeah, we're gonna have that on February as well as election of chair and vice chair. Okay. We thought it might be good to wait till we have a fourth. Hopefully we'll have a full commission by February. Um, and then we'll get things done in an hour.
It's just a little easier to see this larger size than the little ones in the packaging.
Uh, is this one you handed out last night?
Yeah.
Sure.
Well, Tammy, you wanna go over that a little bit?
Sure. Um, let me. It's just getting into Zoom hits. I wanted to show you guys have seen Sundown condos back in February of 2022. This came before you. Um, and if you recall, there were some disputes as to whether or not the developer of phase two had legal access through phase one. Um, originally, when the CUP was approved back in 1983, these were both, um, phase two was approved with a turnaround access or a roundabout access rather through phase one, women into phase two. I'm not sure if the legal dispute has settled or if that's still going on, but the developer has since. Record, let me take. The developer has since acquired land to the west. And so he's proposing a second access through this. And because he's realigning the roadway, he's got to come back for preliminary again. So let me show you how this looks here. Actually, I'm gonna go. Well, I'm gonna actually share this slide I've gotten the presentation here. I have it. Not possible.
Well, she's pumping it up. Did you Jeffs come through the canyon?
Yes.
How was the snow?
Um, I actually had to run a pre-errand in Ogden, so when I came down, it wasn't bad. And it all started in Ogden's a mess. I've never, I've lived here for 12 years, I've never been in Ogden. Did you, it's snowing like this? I didn't realize it gets that slow.
Yeah, it does. It's not a pleasant situation. The snowplows don't get out as much as they should.
There we go, okay.
But I drove down to Powder Mountain and the state does a great job that road.
Yeah, yeah, and state probably seems to be on top of it.
Okay. Sorry, Tammy. No, you're good. This is what was previously proposed. I'm not sure if you guys remember this. Phase, the phase one residents were disputing legal access across this summit-owned parcel here to the west. Okay, there were also some concerns from engineering and fire regarding, if you remember this, really tight turn.
And it's steep there, too.
It's really, the majority of the slopes are over 25% according to their GeoTech report. So they've got some slopes that they're gonna have to deal with. Um, but this is what they're proposing now, so they're coming back for preliminary. Now, originally, the CUP approved 80 units. They've already plotted 20 units in phase one. So they're proposing five 12-unit um, structures, so 60 units. They're looking to plot the remaining units, but they're taking their second access um, over here to the west. Uh, this hasn't been, Fire hasn't given us a detailed um, review of this, but they are speaking with UDOT. They're going over standards that UDOT would require if they were to do their second access here. And UDOT has requested that they adhere to certain um, industry standards that they require. So you'll have more details on this as this comes before you for a recommendation of final. The other thing I wanted to point out that isn't quite clear on the plans that they've submitted is that they originally proposed 20, a 20-foot-wide travel surface on their right-of-way and Fire has requested 26. So what we've done is we've put together an analysis utilizing recommendations from the previous preliminary approval. And I've even got a list of the planning commissions' concerns that you guys had the first time this was brought before you. And those can certainly be added on as conditions before they come before you again. Um, but we've kind of looked at everything and feel that this is, this is a much better proposal that they're putting together. A lot less roadway turns, less concerns for fire district and engineering. They still have a lot of, they, they still have to manage the slope issue and they have to adhere to everything outlined in their geologic and GeoTech reports. But this is what they're coming before you with now. You guys have any questions or concerns or do you want me to mention the concerns that you guys had the last time this came through?
Yeah, I just asked the question.
Yeah.
The western accents, will that be used as a routine, everyday type of access? Or is that only an emergency exit type?
My understanding is that is a routine access. And so likely, likely, the, right, this will be used as the entry. It's the first entry they come upon on this roadway. And I'm sure it'll be used all the time as the primary ingress address, I would think, for these units here.
Why did they do that funky jog, right, as you come in? Is it because of topography?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I assumed that had to be the case, but I was like, that's weird, why?
Well, they were also trying not to deviate too much from their original CUP approval. So the last time this came before you, the question was posed to the planning commission. Are these changes considered de minimis? Um, they've made very slight changes to the building as far as the location of the buildings, very slight changes um, and slight changes to the roadway layout.
Why, why can't they move the road?
To where?
Also, like.
Going straight?
Yeah.
How bad is the topography there?
I think you can see a pretty good idea here. Each of these is gonna be a foot topo line, right?
We have it, so it's pretty upsy, but they're like, but that, it's, it's so, like, it turns with the road, right? So houses are there, turns, goes parallel with the road, then goes perpendicular. Why can't we just get rid of all that and have it turn and go perpendicular with the road?
We're always looking at the ladder.
Oh, back down that way.
The right, no, no, not there, uphill. But the right is, go straight right there to the road. Yeah, the topo wouldn't work.
There's a.
The right is gonna be done. Right is, right, previous here.
Sorry.
It's the left that we're looking at.
The left is what I was referring to is this jog right here. But you can see the topo going up that way, so it kind of follows the topo line.
I'm saying, why did this? Why not just?
I think this one is the topo because this is.
I, I just looked at that an hour ago and it is up and down.
I'm there, I'm there. The topo understood.
Yeah, yeah, it's really steep there.
Really, well, I know, but like, this, they're trying to do what was done before. Are they doing what was done before because that was done before or because it's the best thing to do?
It's the best, it's the only thing worse there. And really, this right here, just up there, I'm actually glad they're not doing this road right through here because the grade difference from here down, it's, it's crazy.
Hmm.
Now, they have managed, according to the plans that they've submitted with this new layout, they've managed to keep the roads that the grade at 10% or under. So I'm assuming had they gone the way you're suggesting, Commissioner Schuman, that, that they may have exceeded those 10% grades.
Okay.
Does roundabout exist today?
No, it doesn't.
So aren't they essentially just taking this road straight over?
Yeah, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Way better. Yeah, and they almost need that switchback over there to make the grade even doable. Because if they went straight, it would be too steep coming down to accomplish, to tie into the unit.
It's like, there's a little bit of a gully right through here, too. So you'd wanna kind of loop around that with this kind of thing to get through this gully that comes down through here. I'm reading it, right? Well, I mean, engineering looks at all that stuff. My, my only thought was, are we preventing them from doing the right thing by saying you need to try and match what was done before? You get what I'm saying? Because, Jesus, so they're, they're trying to match the, the previously approved, trying to keep it the same so they don't have to go back through. Because I think the code says something like minimal changes are allowed. If you make bigger than that, it's a concern. So my concern is from the planning side is, are we causing them to do something that isn't as good as what could be done? That's what my concern is, not like, so I don't know what the.
Yeah, I think now they're going back through, um, because we're saying this is a major change from what was originally approved. But this is, in my mind, this is probably the right thing to do, to have them go back through and, and get your approval on it. But there's not really the ability to change that much on here, um, just because of the topography. I mean, as from what I'm remembering, the worst is down lower. If we just keep the access up on the upper side, it's a little more doable, but it's still not the greatest. There's really not too many options they can do.
You can, yeah, you can see the retaining walls they've proposed here in lieu of winding that road background. They do have um, a geology report that was submitted back in 1983. So they did do their due diligence when they had submitted the original layout of this. Um, but.
Forty years ago.
Yeah. Forty years ago, but I mean, you know, the slopes were the same back then. So this one, I feel like this new proposal makes more sense, is easier. I think what prevented them from doing it, of course, they didn't own that land, but they ended up doing a land swap with Powder Mountain. And so they acquired this. And they, you know, they may try and develop it later on, I don't know. But for now, they're able to get that second access up above instead of having to come through phase one.
One inherent issue, the first time this came, was the people in the existing buildings down below worried about additional traffic.
They were.
So that eliminates this whole.
It does. That really helps them. And they were complaining too, like Tammy said at the beginning, um, do you really have legal access to go through our property? And now we ought to deal with it.
Right? What are all the retaining walls that he's doing up there right now? Without phase one, right?
Yeah.
This, this is phase two. You mean these retaining walls here?
No, the ones I put in this, they put in this summer, re-tiered retaining wall along the main road.
Right.
I assume that was for what they're doing with the foundation they're putting in right now?
Yeah, it's down in phase one.
Yeah, they have a dirt road in there. And when the, the same developer that's developing this phase two actually purchased the lots in phase one, he went to build those condos and we said, you have got to install the roadway that should have been installed when the first set of condos were in there. And so he had to put up bond and everything for him, get the estimates approved by county engineering. We wouldn't issue any building permits until he installed the roads. So that's why you see all of that in phase one right now. And phase one owners weren't super happy about it, I think because of the proximity of the road to their buildings. But we had to require it.
Okay, Corlin, I do consult them out, but I don't see any issue with voting on this because I'm just telling you, I don't see any issue. Do you see any issue? This is a separate applicant, doesn't benefit me in any way, my consulting agreement financially.
I mean, personally, I don't.
Yeah, I don't either. I just wanna make sure, I don't know if any of you guys do.
I think the rule, you have to disclose.
Disclose it.
And I'll disclose, I wanna make sure that if anyone, people here, we talked about it, if anyone had any issue, I'll.
Separate, you, separate applicant, no, I know.
Yeah, okay. I'm contracted, it wouldn't matter even if I brought an application.
I would say exposure, you determine whether or not even.
Any other questions or anything on this one, guys?
We've got about two minutes.
Tammy, were, sorry, were there other issues that were brought up before?
Um, other issues were snow shedding. That, that was a, that was brought up by owners in phase one. And so the planning commissioners wanted to see if there was a way that could be addressed where they're no longer taking their access through phase one. I don't know that it's an issue for this particular developer with phase two. Um, the other thing that was brought up, so just so you're aware, in the FR3 zone, condos are conditionally used, STRs are permitted use. And I know there was concern about parking. These have one-car garages. And there was discussion about possibly including some additional parking in this space, which could certainly be a condition added upon by the planning commission. But those were the main concerns, that going forward, the snow shedding issue is looked at in phase two, not a whole lot to do about it in phase one, and then the additional parking.
Has engineering made any comment about that road coming out and taking a left turn out of that road? Or are they okay with left and right turns out of that road that comes onto Powder Mountain Road?
They haven't given us a detailed review yet, but, yeah.
Well, right, I'm, yes, but I'm talking even more so, both are, both are problematic.
Both of the new roads are really steep and.
I understand if you left turn out of there, that's.
With that curve right there?
I was just there last night at 10:30 PM coming down while there was snow blowing on it. And I would write, there's light inside with.
He's like the live dangerously guy. That could be a big issue.
We would, we would have some detailed reviews from fire and engineering before we come back for a recommendation of final for this.
How's the snow look? Do we have to powder?
Yeah, I was just saying, I haven't actually been riding any powder at all. I don't think it's snowing. But there last night, it was, it was fluffy.
Was it?
Yeah. Yeah, probably not. They don't, they haven't given you a season pass or.
Let the record indicate that all planning commission members are in attendance. We don't have any minutes to review, so we'll move right into it. Do any planning commissioners have any conflicts of interest or ex parte communications to declare for items on today's agenda?
Uh, just wanna make note, I don't believe there's a conflict, but on the first application with sundown that I do consult for Powder Mountain, that is a separate applicant and uh, I'll still be voting on the matter, I don't think there's any conflict.
Okay. Um, we have an administrative item, UVS011222, request for preliminary, preliminary subdivision approval of sundown condominiums phase two. Director Grover, would you please explain the decision type?
Yeah, this is an administrative decision. You'll just be looking at the code, just making sure it's meeting those requirements. Um, Tammy will be explaining how it is or is not meeting code. And then you'll just review it based upon that. Um, there's no need for public hearing or public comments on this item.
Good, okay. Uh, good evening, commissioners. This is a request for preliminary approval of sundown condos, PRUD phase two. Um, this proposal consists of 6.885 acres. Um, little under five acres will be dedicated as open space along with 60 units, private roadways and dual access from Powder Mountain Road. This uh, subdivision will be serviced by Powder Mountain Water and Sewer and they have a letter to that effect. Uh, this came before you back in January of 2022 with this previous proposal here. Um, as you all know, this is a challenging area topographically to develop. And the, um, the developer initially was showing quite a bit more roadway to be able to um, keep the slopes as minimal as possible. Uh, I do want to mention that previously, one of the issues was access through the phase one here to the south. Uh, the applicant is before you today requesting preliminary approval again because this road layout has changed quite a bit. And they are proposing two accesses to the north of phase one. So this roundabout here won't exist. You'll see the roadway coming in here, still 60 units. Um, the, really, the only thing that has changed from this previous um, submittal is the roadway layout. I do want to mention that the applicant is in discussions with UDOT as far as how to make this work and meet their standards. Um, and while engineering and fire haven't reviewed this in detail yet, uh, that will be done before this comes before you for a recommendation of final approval. We do have a geologic hazard study and a geotechnical reconnaissance on file that's been submitted by the applicant. And we've looked at foundation recommendations, drainage recommendations. Uh, developer will be required to adhere to all of those um, as they continue to develop this parcel. Let's see here. These are just kind of the, these are the building elevations. These were presented previously. These are fairly close to the original approval. This comes from a CUP approval back in 1983. Some of the standards that we looked at, these are condominiums, which are a conditional use in the FR3 zone. And again, they've already received their conditional use approval. Um, when we're looking at roadways, I think initially this was proposed with 20-foot-wide travel surface on their private right-of-ways. Fire district has asked for 26 feet. Um, and so we will make sure that that is complied with before this comes back before you. I think that is, it's probably all I have to present. Do you have any questions for me at this time? The developer is here also to answer any questions.
There was, there was lots of concern about snow. And I know there was concern back then about the snow sloughing off the roof. There, there are ways to mitigate that. Can, I wanna, I don't believe that's a safety thing, can put in to request?
I think you could look at some of those things with that.
Requirement that these, they're, like, the other ones there that I remember from the comments, they were very concerned because the snow sloughs off their building. And I wanna make sure, my, my ask would be, we're gonna build some more, let's make sure that that's not an issue. However it is you do it, just make sure that's not.
Yeah, that's totally fair.
So I think that is fair to add there.
Uh, I had a question about the extra parking that you had mentioned previously, uh, for the STR. Permitted use, when would that be something that we would add in as a requirement? You, you mentioned that was a possibility.
Hmm. So typically, when this comes before you, for a request for a recommendation of final, we would ask them to show those parking areas. We'd also show them to snow, to, excuse me, to show the, the snow storage easements um, so that we can better understand how they plan to manage the snow removal within the development.
So that wouldn't be at this point, that would be down the road?
It could certainly be a condition that's added. And then they should adhere to that before we, they should be showing how they're going to address that before we come back before you.
Okay. I'm interested in additional part, the one-car garage, when, when it comes to the STRs, people come up, they share with buddies and they bring multiple cars. And there's already a parking issue in that area as it stands today. So I would be eager to see additional parking um, for those units.
Right, I will mention that Fire District has also requested that no parking be allowed along these roadways in here.
Tammy, are those, um, where the one-car garages are typically, there's a driveway where you can park in those. And these look like there's not even the ability to do that. Is that how I'm seeing it?
Yeah, that's, that's how I'm seeing it as well, so maybe a good question for the developer?
Yeah. Because then that even takes away more parking because you don't have driveways to park in. All you have is one car.
So what are the setbacks?
Um, in this particular zone with condos, um, the setbacks are different from, for condominiums within the FR3 zone. And so let me go back to go back to our code here. I'm not entirely sure that they necessarily have them, but typically for single-family residences, you'll see those where these are all internal.
So being like a, a, a preliminary, we could just put that you need to get up to code with the parking requirements that we have. Or, because I believe we redid the whole parking.
You could for STRs and make that.
Say, hey, because I mean, that, I think that's fair.
Hmm, or if they can't meet that, then we just probably put a condition on here that they want to be able to have STRs in this.
Which that had come in, they would have to look into that.
Yeah.
The reason they're here is to get our concerns, which would be like, snow falling off the roof, parking.
Yeah.
Trash removal.
Trash removal.
Okay. Are we waiting for the setbacks or are we good?
I, it can come later, I just, it was, it was a understanding setback, because then that, then that would have parking, that can come later.
My gut feel um, is that there is none when we're dealing with the condos up in that area.
They can have zero lines at that.
And, and it's part of a PRUD as well, where that allows for quite a bit of flexibility with setbacks.
So I, I think it'd be a good, wise to have this be part of STR parking, the have them, have them meet the, and the requirements we've set forth for parking in the STR.
Yep.
So, any motion?
Question, who would do the review of snow sliding off the roof mitigation plans?
Likely, planning and engineering would work together. We would look at the type of space that's nearest to where that snow shedding would occur. If it's right-of-way or common area or open space or a trail, we'd probably work in conjunction to look at that.
Would, would they normally do that or do we need to make that a condition?
Uh, I would add it as a condition. I would add it as a condition where that's not normally what we would look at.
Thank you.
Other than that, from what I remember, the main concern was the roadway. Last meeting we had on this, there was snow. I think they addressed the road, current proposal, so. That, I'll entertain a motion unless anybody else has any comments. Do you want to hear from the applicant, or you want to go right to motion?
I just didn't, I just didn't know, I'm okay, I just didn't know. Tammy just talked about any questions for the applicant, but I'm fine.
Does the developer have anything they'd like to say? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. Move the Planning Commission. What are we doing? We're giving preliminary approval. Give preliminary subdivision approval of sundown condominiums phase two, file number U V S oh one one two two two. Based on the findings set forth in the staff report, and subject to the staff recommendations in the staff report, together with two additional recommendations, two additional conditions. Number five would be that a snow shedding mitigation plan satisfactory to the engineering building department be submitted for final approval. And number six would be that the that this subdivision meet all parking standards for S T Rs, for any S T Rs that will be approved in the project.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion for approval of the administrative item two point one, all in favor of the motion.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, or motion carries. Five. All right, moving right along, we will have a legislative item with a public hearing discussion and possible action on amending the Weaver County land use code, street trees. Director Grover?
This is a staff-initiated request for you to consider on this. We have not had a public hearing on this, so you'll be having a public hearing, you'll need to open and close that with a motion. And you'll be forwarding on a recommendation to the legislative body, which is obviously the county commission. Mr. Kobe is going to be presenting. Any questions? Okay.
All right, our current ordinance with regard to street trees says that the Planning Commission makes the recommendations regarding where street trees are, what they look like in the number of street trees that are required. If I know anything about developers, they crave predictability in the process. Because if the process is predictable, then they know what to expect at every step of the way. And leaving something vague and open-ended is something they don't like, because although it allows for some creativity, it doesn't allow for that predictability, which is the most important thing for them. Further, to protect the interests of the county, we wanted to make sure that we set up the parameters that developers have to work within in order to make decisions about where street trees go and how they are maintained in the county. And so, that's why we came up with this proposal. It's something that we've talked about before in work session, and you've seen both what this language looks like as well as what the street trees list looks like. So hopefully, this isn't a big surprise to anybody. One thing that we did change over what you've seen last is that we added a provision, it's provision number or letter. Excuse me, I'm all stuck together here. It's number four under, on page six of your staff report, under irrigation required. And what we decided to do with that is, rather than specify exactly what type of irrigation system was, was to go in, in each circumstance, we just said that the developer should suggest to us what will work best different, based on the different soil types and, and underlying conditions, and make sure that those are submitted and approved by the planning director. So, that's what we're looking at there, and otherwise we, staff is recommending approval of this. We did meet with the, the Western Weaver Planning Commission on Tuesday. They heard the same item and recommended approval. One of the things that they wanted to see was that this would be a no-fee permit for tree removal or other maintenance or other things with the, with the so the property owners didn't have to pay a fee to come in if the tree was dying, just to remove it. They still have to come in and get a permit for it, so that the county knows what's going on and that they have a plan for replacing it. But that we're not going to charge them a fee just to take a, a tree out in their, in their park strip. So, permit is required, but it's going to be a no-fee permit per the, the recommendation from the Western Weaver. So, if you guys want to keep in, in same lines with that, we're comfortable with that as staff, I think. I talked to all the staff, we're totally cool with dedicating our time for free for this kind of permitting, I'm just kidding. No, again, the idea was to make sure that the it's not a big cost burden, if the tree has died for whatever reason, that they can go ahead and replace that without having an additional fee there, so.
Who, who is responsible to replace that?
It's the adjacent property.
County, so developer puts it in, dies, I'm responsible for it, but I got a permit.
Correct, yep.
And oftentimes, as county goes into cities, you'll see more development happening, and they like to monitor what's happening with those trees. Oftentimes, if you get a certain species overplanted in a certain area, it can create problems. You start seeing different diseases move into those species, and so, they usually have a tree inventory. But obviously, we're not at that stage right now, but this is just kind of looking further down the road and how we handle it. But we don't want to make it a burden on the property owners that they have to pay a fee or anything like that, so it's just, we want to make it easy.
I'm going to make it clear too, that these are only areas where street trees would be required per the general plan and the roads, maps of the county, and so, some of these road cross-sections are more rural in cross-sections, so they don't require street trees or sidewalks, or other kind of improvements like that. And where, where it's not required, obviously, none of this would come into play, but where it is required in some of these more developing kinds of areas, we would look to see these trees go in.
Question, maybe it's a little off topic. So, so, so if this goes through it becomes the ordinance that's kind of blanket, right, county?
Correct.
If I have a developing agreement that says that I don't have to put in trees, does this take, just go over that?
Yeah, no, the development agreement would take precedence over anything that's in the code. In essence, the development agreement becomes the code governing that particular development. So if there were some concession made for the developer to not require street trees, for whatever reason, can't imagine it, but if it were a thing, then that would be the governing document for that subdivision.
And oftentimes too, we do enter into deferral agreements, because at certain times, all we're requiring is pavement. We're not quite ready for the park strip and things like that, so then there'd be a deferral agreement for that along with those things, so.
And what, here in the county, what does that look like?
Typically, what happens is you have the sixty-six-foot right-of-way dedication, and then you'll have the pavement. And then we'll actually, whatever width that is that engineering requires, and then we'll have a deferral agreement that you won't see anything else that will happen.
Sorry about deferral, that's what I meant, what does that agreement look like? Is it, they put down costs and the inspection comes back?
No, oftentimes with the deferral agreement, there's no cost that's put down at that stage of the game. It's just when the county deems, or whatever municipality is governing that, when they deem it necessary, that they won't protest, that they will pay their proportionate share to put that in. So, and usually that ends up happening, for instance, if there's some type of like, public infrastructure district created or something like that, that kind of instigates that and pushes that along. It's typically not something that a public body will just automatically go and do, they'll be noticing what happened. So they can kind of plan for it and budget for that down the road.
My hypothetical, if in the development agreement it says shall have street trees, but it doesn't give all of this detail, does the development agreement just say, well, they just have to have some street trees?
So in the absence of further detail, we would look to the ordinance itself for guidance, and probably, this, this street tree list, by the way, is, is not going to be part of the code per se. It's referenced in the code and will be adopted by resolution. That's for convenience in, in amending this list in the future, we don't have to go through the whole public hearing process just to take a tree out or add one in. But in, like, like, to answer your question, yes, in order to provide guidance for and in the absence of additional information in a development agreement, we would look to the code to provide that guidance.
But it wouldn't, but it, so if I had a development agreement that just said street trees?
Yeah, then we would go back to this list and.
But it didn't reference this specifically, does that mean that I just put whatever street trees?
No, it would, it would be this.
Whatever is on record at that time, and, and the reason why we weren't making this an actual adopted ordinance is because this is oftentimes a fluid document that changes. When we hear certain things with certain tree varieties, it's easy to just go in and change that. And so we don't have to come back to the legislative body, because most of the time, they don't care about these things. I'm not saying you don't care, but it's not as important.
As I read through this, I've got some concerns. If we go out, take a walk around the neighborhood here, we're going to see street trees all around this city. This city is not rural.
Correct.
And the general plan says we're supposed to be rural up in the Ogden Valley. So I don't see the connection between having a requirement that we got to have curved gutter sidewalk, planting strips, and street trees, and all this stuff in a rural setting. Because rural setting is not the same as city. So, that's first concern. Next concern is, we spend a lot of time talking about, we're running out of water. We gotta now turn to zerscaping, we gotta have gravel instead of planting. Except for street trees, because they're required. Okay? Or, we can have natural vegetation, but we can't do non-natural vegetation unless you got water to do it. Well, I don't see natural vegetation listed on this list. A lot of things that grow up there naturally are not on the list. Next, we got three-acre zoning in the valley. That means we've got probably at least three hundred-foot frontages. I mean, we got huge frontage up there. What if we need sidewalk, curved gutter, and street trees, and landscaping? Doesn't make sense in a rural setting. So, I don't think we need this in the valley. Next observation is, I've looked through this list, and I've looked at the zone where these things. Most of them are zone four to nine. It's a problem growing zone four stuff in the valley. I think there's one zone three here, there's one that's zone nine to eleven, it's not going to grow in the valley. So I understand for a city, if you get something you like like this, it's great. That's not a city up there, it's not supposed to be a city, it's supposed to be rural. Now, if you've got something up there, a subdivision that is an urban kind of subdivision, where you have small lots, and you do have the sidewalks and the park strips and stuff like that, okay, separate thing. But I suggest we don't impose this on the general rural atmosphere in the valley. Fine for West Weaver, if that's something they like. It didn't fit with rural. So that's where I'm, that's my starting point.
Do you mind if I address those, Bill?
Uh, please.
So, the reason, it, it's kind of a challenge when we do the ordinance, because we have to deal with Western Weaver, and we have to deal with the Ogden Valley when we're dealing with this. And so, as we do this, most of the areas that are three acres up in the Ogden Valley, probably ninety-nine percent of them, there'll be deferral agreements. We're not going to be making those applicable to those areas. The areas where they will be more germane to is the areas just outside of, like, some of that closer developed areas, right, sort of old, Old and Newtown Eden, where we've rezoned some of those areas. Yeah, the, and, and as far as the zone goes, we had a wide range of those, and some of those plants in there will not work out in Western Weaver because of the clay and that they have out in that area. And so up in the Ogden Valley, you'll probably have more of your big-toothed maples, your Rocky Mountain maples, and things like that, there are going to be more of a zone two or three in that area. But as far as the plant species that goes on here, that's where staff would be reviewing those, but we have kind of a wide variety of plants, we didn't actually specify which ones will go where, because we're trying to deal with Western Weaver and the Ogden Valley and not say, well, this is for the Ogden Valley and this is for Western Weaver, but just have staff look at that when that happens. But for the three-acre lots, most of them, that won't happen up in the Ogden Valley. It will be more when you have like one-acre lots and things like that, that we'd even be looking at the street trees. So, most of the time up in the Ogden Valley, it's probably not going to be as applicable. At Western Weaver, it'll definitely be applicable. And so, it was kind of a balancing act. You know, do we really make this, you know, specific to everywhere in the Ogden Valley? Or just certain areas? And in, like I said, in most of those areas, we'll always most likely be doing a deferral agreement, because we're not going to be requiring sidewalk or gutter in some of those areas, it's just going to be the, the pavement only, so.
See, I, I appreciate that. I wonder if it wouldn't be best to make this applicable only to lots acre and less?
We could easily do that.
Because I, I look at the deferral agreement, okay, and, and we've been talking about things that, deferral agreement, but you gotta, didn't we just look at something? You gotta put the trees in now, even if it's a deferral agreement, because we might never get them in the future?
Yes, in, in certain instances, yes, if it's required.
Some, some guy with a three-hundred-foot frontage, he's got to do a deferral agreement that someday he's going to put in street trees. Well, what's going to change? He's got a three-hundred-foot frontage, that's his lot, he can't change it.
And most likely, what would change there is if development happens and that area gets rezoned to one acre. So if we just did it for one acre, because most likely, we're not going to be requiring it for, you know, someone who has three-hundred-foot frontages, it's just going to be for the, the smaller lots.
Now, we have discussed that, well, this, things like this, and I'm not sure if it's the landscape, this tree, street tree thing, is dependent on the cross-section that's decided by the county engineer. Look at some cross-section and say, oh yeah, this one's got street trees on it, and this one doesn't, but it's not part of the ordinance, it's not something we look at. It's just an arbitrary decision by the county engineer says, this is a cross-section I'd like to have here. Now, I think of even Old Town Eden, where the ditch goes along the west side of the park. Where the street tree is going to go? There are trees in the park along that perimeter, but we cover the ditch so we can plant some street trees, doesn't make sense there in some places. So, I, I suggest that we, I mean, if we're going to approve this, that we do it for lots one acre or less. And we don't require deferral agreements on bigger lots. Now, if something changes in the future, and some guy's got a three-hundred-foot frontage on his lot, and he wants to make two lots out of it. and he wants to make two lots out of it. Okay, new ballgame. Now we look at it. But if I have a deferral agreement on something that is inconsistent with the general plan that says, hey, this is rural, this is-
Yeah, I don't see any problem doing that. Do you see any issues, Bill, on your side?
No, I don't.
We were trying to keep it easier, but this is even easier. So that's why we have a-
We're trying to make it easy for you.
Thank you.
Except to say that along some more broad and busier streets, sometimes the, the street trees can have a traffic calming effect. And not just the aesthetic value of the trees and the shade that they provide, but the, there is a quantifiable traffic calming impact that street, that street trees have on the, the adjacent roads. So it could be desirable on some of these larger roads to help people slow down and, and take things easy as they drive down the road. But again, I don't think that's a problem because where it, the, 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 the requirement is always where required as determined, not just by the county engineer's arbitrary decision. We're gonna steer away from the word arbitrary, but based on the general plan and the roads layout as well as the subdivision plans as they come through. So it's not an arbitrary question. It's, it's as determined by the county engineer in conjunction with the developer and based on the, the general plan and the streets plan of the general plan. So where required, street trees. Where desirable, street trees. Where not, and maybe one acre is a good cutoff. We can run that up the flagboard.
Let's agree with doing-
No, I'm, I'm in agreement with one acre. I just would love to see something that says where required or allowed. Because sometimes one acre is on a, on a busy road that street trees may be desirable. Again, because the traffic calming impact that they may have. So.
Ditches and speed bumps are four feet high in front of me.
Sure. Just pile some snow up and let you, let you deal with that.
Anyway, you, you did mention that predictability is something that's very important.
Right. Having a clear cutoff, I think, is, is helpful.
This is coming from someone who has more street trees than anybody on, probably in the valley.
Sure.
Interesting. And I've, I've planted about every tree in the Old Town Man and watched them all die. Maybe it's on for a work, but they don't.
It's too cold. Okay. Take a motion to open a hearing.
I'm gonna make a motion to open a public hearing.
Second.
Right, we will vote. Hearing?
Hi.
Hearing.
Chair Schuman, this might be a good time for me to mention just one thing. I did get the chance to review this and spoke with Bill earlier today. And there are some minor technical changes that I recommended to him as far as some of the wording and some of the clarifying of what is in there. Nothing of substance, I believe. So those might be something that Bill wants to actually include in the recommendation to the county commission if this does move forward. So just wanted to bring that to your attention.
All right.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion?
I'll make a motion. I move that the Ogden Valley Planning Commission forward a recommendation to the county commission with respect to ZTA 2023-06. Changes to the public tree air requirements. Uh, section 106 dash four dash two point zero eight zero, street trees. Of, for the recommendation of approval with the following changes. One, that the street tree requirement contained in subsection A be limited to lot sizes of one acre or less. Not be applicable to anything greater lot size. That, number two, that the we have a landscaping list, species list, which is B five. Be less restrictive in the valley. And broadly accommodate trees that will survive in zone two or three. Yes. Number three, follow the recommendation of the West Weber Planning Commission that a permit is required to be a non-paid permit. And something else, let's see. Oh, and with respect to deferral agreements, that they not be required on any lots in excess of one acres in size.
Call second.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
It's not on the agenda. Is there anybody online? All right, we'll move right to remarks from planning commissioners. Okay. Rick, do you want to give us the planning director report?
Um, we will be having a planning commission appreciation dinner on February 22nd at six o'clock at Jeremiah's. June will be sending information out to you, but if you couldn't work your calendars, we'd love to have you there. And then in February, we're only going to be having one meeting and that's on the 27th. So we won't be having a meeting on February 6th. So that's all I got for you.
Portland, what do you got for us?
In one of your recent meetings, you made a recommendation regarding some proposed changes to comply with a bill that was passed in the 2023 legislative session. That was SB 174. That had to do with subdivision approval procedures. And one of the, one of the things that was contained in that was a recommendation to have the planning commission continue to be the approval authority for subdivisions that are not small subdivisions of, I believe it's nine lots or fewer. Yesterday, Bill and Liam, one of the attorneys, and I had the chance to speak with the attorney who is contracted with the Utah Association of Counties. He's also a member of the legislature, Kirk Colomore. And he is, uh, in, in his attorney role, helping all counties draft their legislation. And he heard some of our questions about that and he provided some of his input and thoughts. The biggest takeaway we got from that, I think, is something we'd heard rumors of before, which is that the legislature is likely to make additional tweaks to this process in this coming legislative session that begins upcoming shortly. And so we are still planning to have the recommendation go forward to the county commission. He indicated that as far as having two separate approval authorities for subdivisions, depending on their size, that is, as he understands it, against the intent of the code. Because the code, as it was passed in '23, says the, the county must designate a single administrative land use authority for the review of preliminary applications to subdivide land. So we don't know what the county commission is going to do with that. It's at the same time, potentially something where whatever we do, we're going to have to revise it maybe in a few months or sometime later this year. Because there may be further revisions. But anyway, I just wanted to let you know that that is going before the county commission soon. I wanted to let you know what Mr. Colomore said about it. And just let you know that further changes may be needed in, in the future. So this is just an FYI for you.
So our recommendation was the planning commission review subdivisions greater than small subdivisions.
Yes.
10 acres or more for preliminary.
Yes.
And that the director still continue to have total control of small subdivisions.
That is the recommendation you made.
That was our recommendation. And Mr. Colomore is suggesting, if you're going to have it, or the director do it for small, you gotta have the director do it for all.
His opinion, which is the opinion of that individual, Mr. Colomore, is that the way the language of the code is written now is to designate a single administrative land use authority for the review of preliminary applications to subdivide land. There, you know, there, there is room for interpretation there. And so the, the recommendation has been forwarded to the county commission, the recommendation that you made. So we don't know what the county commission is going to do with that.
Can you read that one more time, a single source?
Yeah. Does the, a county ordinance governing the subdivision of land shall designate a single administrative land use authority for the review of preliminary applications to subdivide land.
So wouldn't that still, to your point of interpretation, couldn't it still come before the public body, i.e. or the planning commission, still on Director Grover to, one, take the recommendation and then approve it, right? But it still has a minute to at least take public input, right?
Um, that is-
Sounds like you, there's flexibility there in that. We're not taking the role. We're all just a part of the review. We are not the review.
That, that could conceivably be a possible method of doing it.
Then that still gives the ability for a public body to be able to speak. And then all of a sudden, then the review still happens at the director level, but it still happened here.
Potentially, if it, yeah, if it fits within the timelines. I'm just going to say my editorial comment is that these two sections that were adopted leave a lot of ambiguity in terms of exact details as far as some of the requirements that the legislature imposed. They imposed timelines on things like a 15 day review cycle in some cases, a 20 day review cycle in other cases. And that was one of the concerns with potentially bringing it to the planning commission. But I'm going to go back to what I said before. It's likely to change from what we're told. There's ambiguity here. So I, I'm not too concerned about, at, at least at this point, making sure everything is, you know, in some complete final permanent state because we're probably going to have to revisit it in the future.
So the, the reason for doing this for the legislature is speed things up, make them simpler. Get them done through the process quicker.
Simpler and more predictable.
More predictable. So I guess if we said the single authority will be the planning commission for all subdivisions, well, that makes it much more cumbersome for small ones. But if we, if it's the director doing everything, that can speed things up.
It, it could. And I didn't mean to open up a, a real debate right now.
One consideration would be-
Yeah. But yes, that's a valid perspective.
Would the director want any, not as a land use authority, as Commissioner Johnson said, because advisory or discussion purposes, who, that kind of input. And I guess that could happen if he is the land use authority to approve or pulmonary approve.
It could if it didn't violate the timelines that the legislature has imposed.
Yeah, so if the director sought input from anybody, he, he could do that.
He could, yes.
It's non-binding input.
Yes.
The last question, is this to improve the amount of housing supply that we have in the market? Is that one of the intended goals, one of, or could you perceive that's one of the intended goals?
I'm sure it is in the mix there.
Yeah, makes sense. I guess my only comment there is like, you got Rick, he's great. But like the next guy who comes in might expect, no, no, right? Because you're giving, it all depends on who sits in the chair.
Sure.
And so, but it's-
Yeah.
I chatted with Commissioner Frower a little bit about some of these things because there's some counties that have opted out of making these revisions until the legislature does this final thing. But then it doesn't allow for anything to happen with the current code until July. And he had some concern about that. But I wasn't aware of this portion of that until just now. And that is a bit of a concern. Because we'll probably need to visit with the commission. Because when I visited with Commissioner Frower about that, just about how the planning commissioner approved it, and his gut feel was to follow along with how the planning, you guys approved that. But this is a new light on things.
Yeah, and I, I didn't, I, it's open to interpretation. And I'm going to say that I believe whatever the county commission chooses to do with that, I don't see it being a problem until we see what the legislature does in this upcoming session. I thought I heard at some point that they chose February 1st as the implementation deadline for last year's revisions. Partly because that would be happening during the legislative session and the legislature could be reacting to whatever was happening as a result of last year's revisions. Is that what, is that what we had heard? And so I think, I think we are doing and, and planning has done what needed to be done.
If we're going to have this discussion, by the way?
Well, I, again, I didn't-
It was informational, but now we're-
Yeah, I didn't mean it as much as a discussion. And you're right, it isn't something that any action should be taken on tonight or really, you know, deep discussion. I just wanted to bring to your attention that, yes, you guys looked at this. We had further discussions about it. And just for your information, it's going before the county commission soon. And this is what might happen in the future. We learned yesterday. So that's pretty much what I wanted to convey.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah.
If there's more, we should probably put it on the agenda item.
Yeah, especially if you want to discuss it and with the intent of taking any action, which I think would be premature right now.
I agree. Okay, well, with that, we'll adjourn.
I make a motion that Commissioner Barber have a fantastic ski trip in Japan.
Oh, yeah.
I second it.